Meeting of the Town of Maryville Town Council meeting is called to order at 6:40. Please rise for the invocation from Reverend Christopher Perez from St. Andrews Angelican Church. And please remain standing for the pledge of allegiance.
That better President Pastor Scott, I don't see.
Not here. Pastor Randy Scott, can you please do us the honors?
Lord, you said you are our light and you are our salvation God. I pray right now for our town of Maryville, Lord. You've taken us through a very tragic event, Lord, even though hearts are torn, Lord, unanswered questions, Lord. We trust that you'll lead us and guide us one day at a time, Lord. Bless, I pray, this council meeting, Lord. Give our council people, Lord, wisdom, oh Lord, to make right decisions, I pray. Bless our town, Lord, keep it, I pray, in Jesus' name. Amen.
(Inaudible)
Roll call, Mr. Guernsey.
Stan?
Here.
Hardaway?
Yep.
Roachet?
Present.
Carroll?
Bennett?
Here.
Whitey?
Here.
Here. Six council present. I have a letter here from Officer Curtis Minchuck, who's the FOP president of Local 168. Dear Maryville councilman and councilwoman, I would like to thank all of you for the immense support given during our darkest hours, losing our brother Officer Nicholas Schultz. It was incredibly comforting to see everybody gathered together and support one another in order to get through this difficult time. In honor of Officer Schultz, we, the FOP Lodge 168, would like to build a memorial monument. The Maryville FOP Lodge 168, along with Catch 22, would like to hold a fundraiser at Catch 22 on Saturday, October 18th, 2014, between 4:00 PM to 12:00 AM. The event will be named a fundraiser for Officer Nicholas Schultz and will be hosting live bands along with DJs. We anticipate a large gathering, therefore, we will also be utilizing outdoor tents. Catch 22, along with several other companies, will be donating all of the food, beverage, and so on. All the proceeds generated by this event will be used to build our memorial monument and to send our officers to the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial in Washington, DC. This was all a last-minute idea, and we are scrambling to gather our needed permits for this event. If it is within your power, we are asking that you assist us with this event by expediting the approval of the permits and waiving any and all town fees. Thank you for taking time to read this letter.
Motion to approve, second.
Motion by Councilman Hardaway, seconded by Councilman Whiting, to expedite the approval of the permits and waiving any and all town fees.
That's my motion.
Very good.
Madam President, through Richard and Ron to Gene, these types of events, I think, are ideal for funds to come out of town donations. I'd ask the gentlemen to modify their motion, that the town council see this event with a thousand dollars out of the town donation fund.
That's good. My motion's still good.
My motion's seconded.
Very good. Yes, Dorinda?
Large gathering permit? Yes.
Yeah, you still would have to go through and go through with the processing.
He needs some signatures. That's it.
Very good.
You did well, except you never signed it.
Oh, thank you.
And also, I'm proud to say that we recently had a Lions Club meeting Thursday. I am the president, Dorinda is the treasurer. We discussed donating one thousand dollars for the police memorial here in our town. At this time, I would like to call up Curtis Minchuck and also Jason from Catch 22. Maybe you could perhaps explain a little bit more on what this event is.
As you know, my name's Curtis Minchuck. I am the president of the FOP Lodge 168. I've been approached by Catch 22 and a lot of our guys to do this event. What this event's gonna do is going to hopefully generate enough money to send our guys down to Washington, DC. Washington, DC, they host Police Week there. And just kinda like the different wars, Vietnam, the World War I and II, they have a wall there for all the officers that have died in line of duty. So, it's a great honor and it's a much show of respect to have this done. And some of the guys that have went through a tragedy with Nick and that were there at this time, we would like to, you know, send them as well, and this is what we're trying to do. Along with trying to build a memorial, I know which we've talked about with some of the councilmen, some of the administration, the police department, to have something here in the front of the town hall, if that was possible. I mean, this is all just ideas, our FOP's meeting on the 8th of October, and we don't know the cost or anything yet, but we're just getting money, and we wanna do something really nice and beautiful for Nick, 'cause that's what he deserves. So, I appreciate, you know, you guys, the donation and all the help you guys have been giving during this time for us, it means a lot to all of us, so.
In the business community, there's been a lot of, just in the short time we've been working on this, the response has been overwhelming as far as people wanting to donate, put up signs just to help us out, but I think that it'll be a success and that the other businesses in the area are more than willing to chip in and help out and make donations so that 100% of the proceeds can go towards the memorial and to send the guys down to DC.
And I know this event too, as well, is, I know that the county, the Sheriff John Munzich is, that helped us in our time when we didn't patrol the town, the county took care of things, they're also providing all the security for this event as well. So, that's another great accomplishment, that, you know, our community's kinda coming together and helping out, so our guys can sit there and, you know, enjoy this with the Schultz family, so.
It's very good. And I thank you both.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, guys.
Madam President, I spoke with Curtis before the meeting, and it goes without saying, I'm sure I've got consensus, but as you know, my employer allows space available advertising, and Curtis and Jason and I are gonna get together and get artwork up for this fundraiser with your authorization. I can tell Lamar the town wants to use their space available advertising for this event up until October 18th, if that's the pleasure.
Yes, it is, and we thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
There's a couple other items I'd like to bring up under communicate.
We got a motion and a second on the floor, but we wanna vote on that first.
Do you have a motion?
And a second.
And a second?
It's already there. A motion, Ron, second.
Okay. That was previous. Okay, gentlemen, let's move on. During this awful time.
We gonna vote on this?
Oh, you know, my mind is not with me after I get emotional. I do apologize to everyone. Roll call, Mr. Guernsey, regarding the...
That's right, yeah.
Yeah.
All right, Stan?
Yes.
Hardaway?
Yep.
Roachet?
Yes.
Carroll?
Yes.
Whitey?
Yes.
Yes, motion carries six to zero. As I was saying previously, with the loss of our officer, Ken Woodside from the court, and I got together and we went to several restaurants, and we were able to take a nice huge amount of food to the family. I'd like to thank Nick Badastaros for twice donating food for the family from the patio restaurant, Robert Overman from the Olive Garden. Thank you, Dorinda, for making the connection. Also Linda Van Clei from Baker Square. They were wonderful and they did donate. Also, I wanna thank Culvers. They're in the audience, I'm gonna ask you gentlemen to please come up. Mr. Terpstra, Mike Bondell, please. During this time, I received a call and telling me Culvers wants to help, Culvers wants to do this. Well, these gentlemen here donated their, from their Crown Point, the Maryville and Highland, Highland store, they had a, yesterday, for Officer Schultz's family, a fundraiser, donating 10% of their intake. And I'm so happy to say, this morning, I received a call, close to three thousand dollars will be donated to the Schultz family, and we thank you. The council thanks you for being the great business you are, along with these other businesses. This is what community is all about, this is what community spirit and the togetherness. And I thank you. If you gentlemen would like to make a comment, I greatly appreciate hearing all your work and all your efforts.
Well, it was our pleasure.
Could you speak closer to the mic, sir? That's okay.
It was definitely our pleasure to help out, and, you know, like we talked this morning, we still have donations coming in, so it might even grow. It's just part of what we do with our Culver family and part of the reason why we're in business than we are with the Culver family, so we just wanted to do our part.
And we thank you so much for doing more than your part and for sharing the sadness and the loss with our community.
You're welcome.
I thank you both.
Thank you, guys.
Thanks, guys.[695.12][695.12](Applause) Madam President.
Yes, sir.
While we're discussing Officer Schultz, I wanted to bring to the council's attention, along with business owners that you thank, I wanna thank Mike Anderson. You guys know that, I think, we've purchased vehicles from him before, police vehicles. The day of the funeral, I think, hopefully, most people saw the artwork that Lamar put up on the digital billboards. I was on vacation, but I was pleased to find out that Mike Anderson called up Lamar the day of the funeral and said preempt all of my ads on digital billboards and run the memorial artwork that Jim and Joe and I presented, put together. So, Nick was honored in Dyer, Sherrville, Highland, wherever there was a Mike Anderson ad, that was preempted, and that artwork honoring Nick Schultz was up during the funeral. And I think that's a fantastic contribution by one of our local businesses as well. Additionally, Madam President, I would like to ask and instruct Bruce, chief, and pass it on, I'm sure Curtis, all the guys have them, I saw them last night at Culvers, I have one on my car, I think every town vehicle should have the badge decal that they prepared for Officer Schultz. Public Works trucks, Bruce's car, everyone's, if they're not already on there, they should be on there.
Most of them have them ready.
Do they already? Okay, good.
I got mine on. I still got mine on.
Got mine, yep.
Okay, very good. Very good. And, you know, yesterday afternoon, when I was driving past our town hall, there were several ladies getting out of their vehicles and still presenting bouquets on that flower. So, the grief is still out, out there, and it's touched our souls and our spirits. And this is rough, it's our first officer, and I hope to God it's our last.
Well, we've got a, there will be a bench out, a bench out in the Veterans Park. I'm having it engraved right now, it's already at the engraver, so that should be done, hopefully, by the end of this week, and we can get that in place also.
Very good. Okay, moving on. To the consent agenda, counts payable register vouchers approval for September 9th and 23rd of 2014, also the approval of town council meeting minutes of August 26th, 2014.
So moved.
Tackled.
Motion by Councilman Pettit, seconded by Councilman Whiting, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion approved, six to zero. Moving on to standing committees, budget and finance, Councilman Garalcheck.
Yes, our first reading on the budgets will start in our next council meeting, and I think the meeting date is October 7th?
Fourteenth.
October 14th will be the first readings on the budget for 2015. That's all I have.
Okay.
Why is it in here?
Madam President, ordinance 1426 is on the agenda, which is first reading of the, is that an air, Bruce?
No, we got that from the treasurer's office.
Okay. I spoke to Linda Monday, so she told me that the first readings were gonna be, so if I'm in air, then I'm in air.
Well, I guess the question is, is do we do it tonight, or do we need to revise the agenda?
No, if it's on the agenda, then...
It's tonight?
It should be tonight, because Diane was on vacation, and I got the information from Linda.
Okay, anything else under budget and finance? Hearing none, Public Works, Councilman Pettit.
Madam President, to Bruce, I guess maybe two quick updates, Bruce, street paving and start of, I know it's early, everything ready for leaf collection?
Yes, everything's pretty much ready for leaf equipment, all the equipment's been gone through before we even put it away, so they'll get it out here in a week or two and make sure everything's still running really well. I can't give you the date, it's always usually the middle of October we start, and we'll do the two, last two weeks of October and the four weeks of November, we'll get started then. The newsletter should be out shortly, so of course, the leaf pickup schedule will also be in the newsletter, and we'll also send out press releases, we'll put that into the paper, so people know when we're coming. Paving, Washington Kelly's up north working, you know, everybody got hit pretty bad over the winter with their roads, and Washington Kelly's been extremely busy, and we've been very fortunate to have them in town almost every day, and they've sorta got into a snag, falling behind in concrete work. So, there's gonna be some milling and paving going on for the next week, but probably not till the middle of week, we'll start whatever road we've got left, and there's only a handful of them pulling out concrete and replacing it.
Rich, traveling as I do, and Gary, I've noticed they've been doing some paving, did you get your 53rd Avenue resolved?
Yeah. I was gonna mention that, I'd like to thank the council for your support in getting that done. They didn't, you know, they did what they did.
Okay.
And at least now it's passable, and probably by the time next election rolls around, they'll have to do it again.
Yeah.
But I appreciate you guys' support and as we pursued that, because now, at least when you drive down 53rd Avenue going east, you won't have to dodge potholes.
Yeah.
So, thank you, guys. Thank everyone.
Okay. That's all I have, Madam President.
Very good. Council affairs, Councilman Span.
Yes, Madam President, I got a, from Habitat for Humanity, they're requesting a waiver permit for 5905 Roosevelt Street, Maryville, Indiana. Would it be possible for the town of Maryville to waiver the building permit fee for the home to be constructed, as mentioned, miss me out?
Yes. Do I hear a motion from anyone?
I'm so moved.
Second.
Okay, motion by Councilman Hardaway, seconded by Councilman Span, to waive the building permit fee for the home.
Madam President, this should be noted, that this is for a veteran, disabled vet. He's a single parent with two sons.
Yes.
So, I think that this is something very commendable.
Very important. And also, I want this to be noted too, the town of Maryville should be very, very proud. I went to the groundbreaking ceremony at 5905. This is the first home in the state of Indiana that is being constructed for a veteran and his two young children through Habitat for Humanity.
And this is brand-new construction?
Brand-new construction.
Yeah.
And they're looking for volunteers to, anybody who knows how to plaster paint, saw wood, I mean, I volunteer for the, yeah, for the painting and the plastering, so.
With Richard volunteers, he can't get on no ladder.
Yeah, me too. And we'll just do everything.
That's second new supervisor.
Yeah. We'll just do everything four to five feet high for us. Okay, roll call, Mr. Guernsey. Thank you.
Stan?
Yes.
Hardaway?
Yeah.
Roachet?
Yes.
Bennett?
Yes.
Whitey?
Yes.
Yes. Motion accepted, six to zero.
Madam President, the groundbreaking that you attended, that's the parcel right on the corner of the intersection, correct?
Correct, yes.
I'm proud to inform the council members and those that are here for the meeting that that property was donated by my mother at the time.
I was gonna ask John if that was your mom?
At the time of her passing, specifically, it was her request that it be given to Habitat for Humanity, so that it could be a new home for a new family.
Wonderful.[1201.45][1201.45](Applause) Anything else under council affairs, Councilman Span?
No, that's it.
Okay. Moving on to personnel policy and employee benefits, Councilman Garalcheck.
No report.
Madam President.
Yes, sir.
To Tom, I've had some inquiries, a couple of them, that with regard to our health insurance and our death benefits, that I'd like the committee to look into.
Okay.
All right? And see what it would cost to have the death benefit increased.
Okay.
All right? And I don't know if we need to call Carol or Tony and find out for the officers and for all the employees.
Right.
Moving on to public safety, Councilman Whiting.
No report.
Parks and Recreation, Councilman Span.
There's something on there about an auction, I don't know anything about it. You know anything about something?
John has the information on this.
Yes, the council members will recall that you authorized a public auction of two town-owned parcels. There was a re-auction for the second time of the parcel on 80th Lane at 3694 West 80th Lane, the Hendrix Park parcel. And there was also an auction of the lot in Union Park, the lot which is the north lot at the approximate address of 7200 Broadway. And the auction was conducted on August 27th. We have the results of the auction with respect to the Hendrix Park lot. There was a, there was a offer of three thousand dollars submitted by an individual, and Mr. Niemeyer, the auctioneer, and I have copies of that written offer, and with respect to the Union, and that was the only offer on that parcel. Likewise, on the Union Park parcel, there was one offer, and that offer was also submitted in the sum of five hundred dollars, with the specific condition that the purchaser shall completely demolish both the home and the garage structure and remove from the site within 90 days of closing. So, those are the two offers, and it is at the discretion of the council whether it wishes to accept either offer.
Madam President, at this time, I would make the motion that we refuse the offer on Hendrix Park of three thousand dollars. The last time it was up for auction, it was thirty-six thousand dollars, and I felt that that parcel was worth more than a hundred thousand dollars. So, at this time, that would be my motion to refuse the offer on Hendrix Park, three thousand dollars.
Second.
Okay, motion by Councilman Garalcheck, seconded by Councilman Hardaway, to refuse the offer for Hendrix Park. Roll call, Mr. Guernsey on this, please.
Span?
Yes.
Hardaway?
Yeah.
Roachet?
Yes.
Bennett?
Yes.
Whitey?
Yes.
Yes, motion approved, six to zero, to refuse the offer regarding Hendrix Park. I would like to briefly speak on the other offer that we had during the auction, since this is in my ward. To remind everyone, that piece of property has been an eyesore. I would say for the past eight to 10 years, there was an old shack, shed, whatever you wanna call it, that was there, it was filled with nothing but garbage, it was filled with animals, the roof was leaking, it was torn apart. In that property, I discovered upside-down, rotted-out canoe, a water tank, hot water tank, other debris, old furniture. We got that cleaned up, okay? And it looks pretty good. I think it looks very good. With this offer that we received during the auction for that north parcel of Union Park, we have to remind everyone about this house that has been there. Our fire department has used that home to practice on fire safety. It is rundown and it looks deplorable. So, with this offer we have, and with a person who put in a bit for this property, he will be doing a lot more for this amount of money than what actually, what we would have to be spending. Okay, so...
I make motion that we accept the five hundred dollar offer for the parcel at Union Park.
Second.
With the noted conditions that the buildings, both buildings be demolished within 90 days.
Very good.
Both buildings, wait.
There are actually two structures, two frame structures.
Right. That will be...
Well, there was another building, a little bit further that way, I didn't know that that was part of that.
Just the two structures.
Okay.
Yes. Okay, motion by Councilman Hardaway, seconded by Councilman Whiting, to accept the offer of, what is it, three hundred?
Three hundred?
Three hundred dollars.
Sorry, five hundred dollars.
Sorry, five hundred dollars, gonna give you a deal there.
Subject to the condition that the purchaser shall demolish the vacant frame dwelling and garage structure within 90 days from closing on the sale.
Very good. Gene, roll call on that, please, to accept the offer.
Stan?
Yes.
Hardaway?
Yeah.
Roachet?
Yes.
Carroll?
Yes.
Whitey?
Yes.
Yes, motion approved, six to zero.
Madam President, under Parks and Recreation and staying in the Union Park, as you alluded to, that's in your ward, and we kinda share that, that area between you and I and Broadway. Do we have plans being drawn up for the actual development? I know we wanted to have the unions try and participate, and to that end, what I would like to recommend as our DC president is, and I can put it in the form of a motion, that we allocate seventy-five thousand dollars out of the Broadway TIF to go toward the development of a plan and/or actual physical development of Union Park.
Second.
Okay. Motion by Councilman Pettit, seconded by Councilman Span, to donate or to give seventy-five thousand dollars to begin.
Begin the process, yeah. We need a plan, if it hasn't been done, and if it has, to get it going, now that we got the house coming down in 90 days.
Exactly. I have a meeting scheduled for Thursday regarding...
Okay. If we need to buy, and I know you talked about passive, if we wanna put walking paths or water fountain or trash cans?
You know, I sit here like I'm quiet all the time. You know, we got that park, it was the understanding that it wouldn't go under the taxpayers' money to do anything with that park and give it to the union. We're gonna give the union so much time. You know, we got seventy-five thousand, we gotta do some of that Old Mill. I don't wanna spend the money on that park, when that Old Mill is seen as an eyesore, we gotta do some of that first. So, that TIF money, I'd rather see, that park, when that building comes down, the grass is cut, and the unions don't step up, that's one thing. But seventy-three is ours, on that, the Old Mill, I'd rather see that seventy-five thousand go that Old Mill, be caught in that project, over there where everybody drives through every day and see it. That park, and everybody drive by, it's not an eyesore.
Believe, I agree with you 100%, Gene. We're about to approve a budget for Broadway TIF of nine hundred thousand dollars for next year, I got absolutely no problem. It's smack dab in my ward. I drive by it every day, taking my daughter to school, we gotta do something with Old Mill. I mean, but we also have gotta do something on Broadway, where we've got thirty-five thousand cars going up and down it every day, looking at Union Park, too.
Exactly right.
You know, I mean, I'd be more than happy to make a second motion, you guys know me, I have no problem making a motion as far as taking care of Old Mill out of Broadway TIF.
Gene, I think I have a solution for that, and I'll talk to you after the meeting about how we can fund it to take it down.
I see you're quiet all the time.
And I understand, and I think we've got an answer for that, that'll work just fine.
All you guys have an answer, you know, I'm not, I'm not just making money till, you know, I mean, for something.
Okay, I'm not gonna be over here throwing tomatoes at anyone. The previous council person that was in War III, I begged him repeatedly to do something about that disgusting armpit right out on Broadway. And I think we got it cleaned up, I think it looks very good, and as it is now, I think it looks great. As a matter of fact, Mr. Wal... As a matter of fact, Mr. Wally Cook Senior always tells me, you know what, he says, I see families of deer walking through, he says, it's so clean, it looks so nice there. And he says, wait till the fall leaves, when it's, it's gonna look nice, and it's gonna look pretty. So, yes, we will be moving forward on that Union Park. As far as with the Old Mill, it has to be torn down. We're not gonna try to resurrect and put three million dollars in a building that's gonna fall on someone or on a school bus. So, yeah, definitely, it has to be torn down. I know some people want to save it, you know, there are some things in life you just cannot save. You know, you cannot save an old building ready to fall down, you cannot save, uh, an old animal, fifteen, eighteen years old, who's about to pass away. But, yes, it, it has to be, you know, it has to be torn down. I know some people wanted it saved. There's not enough money in this town to resurrect that Old Mill.
But we need, we need something in the plan to re- resurrect something there, in that spot, that we have something to be brought out of this town. We got a historic district, that has nothing in there, absolutely nothing in there, except a couple of houses. Either do that historic or historic district, you know, let's call it something else, new old town or something, you know, but, you know, I, I, I need, something's gotta be done with that, that we, we have something, we have no place in town, there's this called center town, that we have pride in anything.
You know, when we had.
Can we vote on them?
Yeah, call for the vote, Madam President, and we can take up the Old Mill.
We can go on and on all about this regarding it, and I just want to say one thing, there was no one that was more broken-hearted than I was when I heard from two different gentlemen that did an appraisal on that building, that it had to go down. Right, Bruce? I was broken-hearted about it, because, yes, this is the oldest spot.
I walked in there, I wanted to cry. I, I mean, I mean, besides sliding through the grease part.
Can we, can we get back on Broadway, and then, we, we can go to Seventy-third later.
We can take a ride at the light.
There you go, there you go, okay, where are we at? Yes, sir.
Before we leave this subject, I, I know the gentleman that's going, that wants, or going to be purchasing, uh, that lot at Union Park is really anxious to get started. John?
Right.
And John, I don't know if there's gonna be an issue, does anybody have an issue if, before all the paperwork's done and everything gets signed over to, that if he wants to go in and start cutting trees and doing some stuff now, he can?
Provided that it's at his risk, 'cause right now, the town is the title owner, so if, if he'll sign, uh, assumption of the risk, and, uh, an indemnification agreement, that would be fine, he can do preliminary work, uh.
Okay, I'll, I'll.
He could even, he could even, uh, move forward, uh, on the demolition, but it would have to be Bruce with that condition.
And you'd be able to give me something like that for him to sign?
Yes, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Now that the council's taken the action, we're gonna schedule the closing to be done as soon as possible, but the closing itself won't take place for a couple of weeks, so if he's interested in moving forward prior to that time, uh, I'll coordinate with you and prepare what he needs to execute to assume all risk until title passes, and then he can move forward.
Okay, thank you.
That should, I think there should be a approval of the, uh, council, after you're done with the Broadway matter, there should be, uh, approval of, uh, of that particular authorization by a separate vote of the council.
Okay.
All right.
So you, you have, you have the, uh, seventy-five thousand.
Seventy-five thousand from the Broadway TIF vote.
Okay.
We need a vote, Madam President.
Yes, we do, we had a motion, and we also had a second, so, Gene, roll call, please.
Span?
Yes.
Yep.
Rojek?
Yes.
Hey, Pettit?
Yes, Gene.
Whitey?
Yes.
Of course. Motion carries six to zero.
And now, Madam President, you have, uh, from the, uh, town manager, uh, Mr. Spires, a request that the town council authorize, uh, the purchaser of seventy-two hundred Broadway, uh, that he be authorized in advance of the title transfer to, uh, begin, uh, tree removal and other site work, with the condition that he execute a hold harmless and indemnification provision to the town.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Whiting, seconded by Councilman Pettit, that, um, he may begin, uh, taking down some of the trees, and also for the.
If he wants to proceed with the beginning of the demolition process also.
All right, so, I guess we have another vote.
Here you go. Span?
Yes.
Hardaway?
Yep.
Rojek?
Yes.
Bennett?
Yes.
Whitey?
Yes.
Yano?
Yes. Motion approved, six to zero. Okay, anything else other, on Parks and Recreation? Wow, all right, environmental affairs, Councilman Garalcheck.
Uh, Matt Lake wasn't able to, uh, be here tonight, but he left me a brief summary of, uh, what he wanted to cover. Uh, he said the Stormwater crews have been out, uh, clearing drains and, uh, non-regulated ditches have been cleared of debris, and, uh, there's been very little call volume to Stormwater Office after the recent rain events, uh, but when a call's received, uh, they take immediate action. Also, uh, Indiana Department of, uh, Natural Resources Urban Grant for thirteen thousand five hundred eighty-seven dollars was received on September fourth, and a representative were there from Indiana DNR and EPA on September eighteenth to see the project, and the trees , uh, planted and landscaped at Stormwater Resource Center. And, um, Matt's gonna be attending a floodplain, uh, management conference on the tenth through the twelfth, and illegal, uh, dumping signs were ordered for Madison Ditch and Tanye Ditch. Uh, it's a partnership between Lake County Solid Waste and, uh, Stormwater for illegal dumping, and there's a hundred dollar reward for, uh, information leading to a conviction for illegal dumping. And the final invoice, uh, of a hundred and eighty-seven thousand five hundred dollars was sent to IDEM for the cost share of the Tastree project and dire construction, will resume its work, uh, after Nippsco moves the line. And that should be about it. And, uh, one other thing that we have, um, the BZA had taken some action on, um, a proposed, uh, clean fill site. Uh, I would like to schedule a public meeting before the Plan Co- Plan, uh, Commission Workshop at five P.M., for the developer of this property to come in and explain to us, and the residents of the town. Uh, we've received a few phone calls and a few emails, I know the rest of you have received phone calls and emails, um, let's bring it out in the public, let them explain to us what this project is, and let's see if we can move forward with it, or if we're even gonna move forward with it. So I would like to schedule that on October seventh at five P.M. for an open forum on this, uh, project that's happening. That's all I have.
Madam President, I have something. Um, I've had three or four residents call with issues, and I directed them to you, Matt Lake, and they were all very impressed at how quickly they responded.
Very good.
And they, they were very impressed with Matt Lake.
Very good, I think we've been all receiving phone calls, um, I know someone is circulating flyers, uh, with all of our names, I guess, on it, each different one. And, um, I'll tell you, some of the residents has been exceptionally well, except I got a very violent phone call, I'm not going to say where it came from, but it was from, um, people in Holbert. So, our residents of, of Miraval, thank you for being so gentle and kind with us when we were explaining, uh, the, uh, clean fill in the old sand pit. Okay. Anything else, Tom?
No, that's all I have on the environmental.
Very good. Elections and public relations, I have no report. Economic development, Councilman Garalcheck.
No report.
Since Councilwoman Baron isn't here, anything on utility liaisons? Nothing, okay. I have nothing under town government reorganization or ADA, uh, compliance, abandoned properties, Councilman Hardaway.
Yeah, I, uh, I attended a meeting yesterday, the Lake County, uh, Abandoned Properties, uh, Committee, and, uh, there's a lot that came out of it, and so I will, once I meet with my committee, then I will share it with the rest of the council.
Very good, anything else?
That's all I have.
Great. Moving on to, uh, the agenda, ordinances, first reading, ordinance fourteen dash twenty-six. Be it ordained, resolved by the Town of Miraval that for the expenses of Miraval Civil Town for the year ending December thirty-first, twenty-fifteen, the sums herein specified are hereby appropriated and ordered set apart out of the several funds herein named and for the purposes herein specified, subject to the laws governing the same, such sums herein appropriated shall be held to include all expenditures authorized to be made during the year unless otherwise expresses, expressly stipulated and provided for by law. In addition, for the purposes of raising revenue to meet the necessary expenses of Miraval Civil Town, the properly taxed levies and property tax rates as herein specified are included herein. Budget Form Four dash B for all funds must be completed and submitted in the manner prescribed by the Department of Local Government Finance. This ordinance slash resolution shall be in full force and effect from and after its passage and approval by the Town of Miraval.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Garalcheck, seconded by Councilman Pettit. Roll call, Mr. Gernsy.
Madam President, a point of order.
Yes.
Uh, first reading ordinances on the annual budget are a public hearing and should have been advertised there as. Is that, did you guys advertise it?
This came from the clerk's office.
All right, it's the first reading.
Yeah, Diane did it all, so I assume it's all correct.
All right, just so we make sure we follow everything that was said to me.
Again, if there's an issue, we can always go through this again the next time, but I think everything's okay.
Okay.
Okay, very good.
You would take any public comment at this time?
Okay, do we have any public comments? Do there any public comments? Any public comments? Seeing no public comment, roll call, Mr. Gernsy.
Man?
Yes.
Hardaway?
Yeah.
Rojek?
Yes.
Bennett?
Yes.
Whitey?
Yes.
Yes, motion approved, six to zero. Ordinance fourteen dash twenty-seven, an ordinance of the Town of Miraval Town Council mending the renewal dates for the town business license and hazardous materials registration, and authorizing the clerk treasurer to bill and collect the annual business license fee, hazardous materials registration fee, and alarm permit fee at the same time, beginning January first and ending December thirty-first.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Pettit, seconded by Councilman Whiting.
Madam President, this, uh, was brought to us by the clerk treasurer's office, it's a very important, uh, streamlining ordinance. The current business license is a one-year license, but it's on an October thirty-one to October thirty-one cycle. The hazardous materials registration, which is another, uh, business registration, has a one-year term, but the term is inadvertently not authorized and specified with a start date and an end date. And our ordinance and our alarm system permit does have a one-year term commencing January one, ending December thirty-one. The purpose of this ordinance primarily is to coordinate all three of those business licenses so that they run on the same term from January one through December thirty-one. It'll be a more efficient operation for the clerk treasurer's office. I also believe it'll also be helpful for businesses in town because they'll have one-stop shopping for those three purposes yet, with one effort.
All right.
Yes, and, uh, there's been a request, Madam President, by the clerk treasurer's office that the council consider enacting this ordinance on both first and second reading this evening, so if the council so desires, you should conduct a first reading, roll call vote at this time, and then, uh, if the council desires to move forward, there would be a motion to suspend rules, which requires unanimous, unanimous adoption, and then second reading, any public comment, and a second reading roll call vote.
Uh, the suspension, uh, John, is the members present, not the entire council?
That is correct.
Okay.
So at, at this time, we have the first reading roll call vote.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Hardaway, seconded by Councilman Span, for a, uh, the motion to suspend the rules, and hear this on the second.
You're on first reading.
This is, Brian and I, motion, the first reading, for one, the first reading roll call.
Okay, and that was, uh, seconded, uh, motion by Councilman Pettit and seconded by Councilman Hardaway, I mean Councilman Whiting, on the first reading.
Okay.
Yes, we take, oh, yes, vote on that one first.
Span?
Yes.
Hardaway?
Yep.
Rojek?
Yes.
Bennett?
Yes.
Whitey?
Yes.
Yes, motion approved, six to zero.
And now it's in order for a motion to suspend the rules to allow second reading adoption.
Second reading adoption of, uh, ordinance number fourteen twenty-seven.
Second.
Okay, motion by Councilman Hardaway, second, but seconded by Councilman Span, um, a motion to suspend the rules, and, uh, to have this for a second reading. Mr. Gernsy, roll call, please.
No, not yet.
Span?
Yes.
Hardaway? Rojek?
Yes.
Bennett?
Yes.
Whitey?
Yes.
Yes, motion approved, six to zero.
All right, now, Madam President, the rules have been suspended, and the, uh, ordinance fourteen twenty-seven is eligible for a motion to approve on second reading.
So moved.
Bennett?
Motion by Councilman Pettit, seconded by Councilman Span, under second reading.
And, uh, there would be an opportunity for public comment.
Okay, do we have any public comments? Any public comments? Any public comments? Hearing no public comment, roll call, Mr. Gernsy.
Span?
Yes.
Hardaway?
Yep.
Rojek?
Yes.
Bennett?
Yes.
Whitey?
Yes.
Yes, motion approved, six to zero. Ordinance fourteen dash twenty-eight, an ordinance of the Town of Miraval, Lake County, Indiana, appropriating additional monies within various funds for the year twenty-fourteen, not included in the current, uh, budget, for the twenty-fourteen salary raises resulting from the revenue of the local option income tax.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Whiting, seconded by Councilman Pettit. Roll call, Mr. Gernsy.
Span?
Yes.
Hardaway?
Yeah.
Rojek?
Yes.
Bennett?
Yes. Whitey?
Yes, motion approved, six to zero.
Been here a long time.
Okay, ready to go? Ordinance fourteen dash twenty-nine, an ordinance of the Town of Miraval, Lake County, Indiana, appropriating additional monies within the parks, non-reverting fund for the year twenty-fourteen, not included in the current budget. The following sum, again, was not included, but in order to provide for the payment of certain obligations and contractual services, and to appropriate additional monies to support the twenty-fourteen budget, uh, for contractual supplies for a sum of twenty-five thousand dollars.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Pettit, seconded by Councilman Hardaway. Roll call, Mr. Gernsy.
Yes.
Hardaway?
Yep.
Rojek?
Yes.
Bennett?
Yes.
Whitey?
Yes.
Yes, motion approved, six to zero. Ordinance fourteen dash thirty, an ordinance of the Town of Miraval, Lake County, Indiana, transferring monies of the twenty-fourteen budget within the Parks and Recreation Budget for a decrease of maintenance crew, twelve thousand dollars, unemployment, two thousand dollars, garage and motor supplies, three thousand dollars, and an increase of part-time custodian, six thousand dollars, office supplies, one thousand dollars, gasoline, two thousand dollars, other supplies, three thousand dollars, contractual, five thousand dollars, for a total sum of seventeen thousand dollars. Uh, decrease, seventeen thousand dollars, increase, no change.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Motion by Councilman Whiting, seconded by Councilman Span. Roll call, Mr. Gernsy.
Span?
Yes.
Hardaway?
Mm-hmm.
Rojek?
Yes.
Bennett? Whitey?
Yes.
Yes, motion approved, six to zero. There are no second, uh, readings, so we will move on to the agenda for the resolutions. Resolution fourteen dash thirty-three, a resolution of the Town of Miraval, Lake County, Resolution fourteen dash thirty-three, a resolution of the Town of Miraval, Lake County, Indiana, approving real property tax abatement on property located within an economic revitalization area, declaring property tax abatement procedures to be filed and designated a particular area within the town as an economic revitalization area for the purposes of encouraging development and occupancy therein by providing real and personal property tax deductions in accordance with provisions of Indiana Code six dash one, one dash twelve, one, as amended.
Motion to approve, Madam President?
Second.
Motion by Councilman Pettit, seconded by Councilman Hardaway. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Motion approved, six to zero.
Madam President, just for the, uh, for the record, I know that Melissa and Steve Giles are in the audience. This was for CCL Design. Uh, they are gonna be purchasing, uh, seven acres in Amerplex and building a brand-new fifty-five thousand square foot facility. Welcome to town, guys.
Resolution fourteen dash thirty-four, a resolution of the Town of Miraval, Lake County, Indiana, approving real property tax abatement on property located within an economic revitalization area within the town, uh, for purposes of encouraging development and occupancy therein by providing real and personal property tax deductions in accordance with provisions of Indiana Code six dash one, one dash twelve, one, as amended.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Councilman Pettit, seconded by Councilman Whiting. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion approved, six to zero.
Again, Madam President, uh, this is for South Lake Automation, Cool Breeze LLC, Paula and Terry Miller in the audience. Uh, again, welcome to town, and kinda proud they're both in, in Ward Six, but we all benefited from them.
Yes, we do. Thank you. Resolution fourteen dash thirty-five, a resolution of the Town of Miraval, Lake County, Indiana, transferring monies of the twenty-fourteen budget within the local road and street fund budget, uh, for an increase, I'm sorry, for a decrease of freight, one thousand five